I have three legislative requests. As I was just saying, I had for discussion mutual aid agreement, but it developed a little bit more and now I have legislative requests, but I'll take them in order. The first one is a legislative request to enter into contract with Jay's Towing to lease space for the purposes of operating the Heath Police Department impound lot at $250 per month. And that's a month-to-month. It's, I'm trying to recall last month, the figure gave me $450.
Four fifty-four.
Okay.
Four fifty-four.
Yeah. And you, Mr. Craywell, had asked for what kind of revenue were you generating from the impound lot? Last year in 2012, we impounded 203 cars. And with that, in fees, another related to storage impounds, $11,357, in an auction, $18,950. I don't have, I think there's positively cash flow.
Yeah.
Definitely. Yeah, business is good. Any questions or?
You said month-to-month.
Yeah. He thought that that would be most agreeable to both parties.
He's still doing the garage and, I mean, separate fence area of the garage?
Yeah, yeah. The gravel base, put in a gravel base adjacent to the main garage and office and security fence, gate, and he'll give the officers a key to their front gate should we need to get in there for some reason after midnight.
Are you responsible for the fierce negotiations of this place?
No, I just asked Jay what his counter offer was.
Better.
Yeah, when the first one was rejected. Well, that wouldn't be a counter offer, that would be a...
Get out of jail free.
No, but I hinted that we were collecting donations for our anniversary, here's the anniversary commemoration. I didn't twist his arm or anything. And my firearm stayed in my holster.
Nothing was, no guns were pointed.
Nope.
Not just we, no? No duress could be?
No, no, he's younger now, he probably could take. So.
All right.
One down, two to go.
But what the door hit you?
Oh, I went ahead and included in that legislative request language to no longer share costs with the Parks Department because here before they got 50% of the storage fee. So, we're talking six bucks a day. And, but that would make the 250 a lot more palatable to me especially and to you folks.
Do we need to move all the sniggles from the other place out there or just slowly do it as a dwindles or how are you gonna do it?
When we're ready to go, I'd like to have him.
Just load them up?
Yeah.
That's all part of the agreement, right?
If it's not, I'll use the race car trailer and I'll...
Chief, you mentioned a month-to-month agreement?
Yes. Well, that was his suggestion, not mine.
Okay. Now, I want to make sure that I'm, I guess, understanding what that means. Does he mean that he wants paid monthly or is he saying that with a 30-day notice either party could terminate the agreement?
I think the latter is what his concern was.
Okay.
More so for us to quickly change our mind if we want to go another route.
Okay.
Or if the next...
So, the fence and everything at Park's facility is gonna need to stay there just in case something or other happens where we only have a 30-day notice of where we're no longer gonna be able to have our impounded cars there on that property, right?
Well, that's a judgment call. I, you know, I'm comfortable that he'll be in existence for some time and I think it's a win-win for both the city and Mr. Tofolo.
I think it is too, but my dad always taught me that you hope for the best and you prepare for the worst.
Well...
If we only have a 30-day notice of no longer being able to use that property, we need to be, we would need to be ready to pivot quickly.
Well, you know, I certainly want to take our IP camera alarm and move it to the new location, the one that's wired into dispatch, yes. And that security fence is just about as good as a battery-operated saw's law.
I have a little bit of experience to make sure everything that goes good for two or three months, but after that I'm not sure I'm gonna have to keep it at that level for years. And I don't want less, you know, lesser than that. Eventually I don't want to end up...
I know he would.
From a budgeting perspective, the budget's not exactly that bad. One year with a renewable type clause of some sort, some sense to consider.
Yeah, I don't...
Just something that wouldn't let either party pull the plug so quickly.
Yeah. Well, again, that was his, I think, his concern that we, that would be more palatable to us, but I'm sure all this negotiation, I shouldn't say I'm sure, but I feel I'm on...
I was just gonna say Jay's a really easy guy to work with.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure you could negotiate that with him over the telephone.
Yeah, I think he would too.
You'd have some conversation about one year. I don't have the rule unless you give like a 60 or 90 day...
Yeah, yeah, something like that.
Give a 90-day notice.
I'm just saying, 30 days is short. Well, I'll let him go.
Renewable, 90-day notice if you don't want to renew either party. That way, for some reason, he doesn't want to do it anymore. We've got 90 days.
Okay.
Is our law director drawing up the contract for me or?
I don't know. I think, I think he was planning on doing it. Oh, yeah, yeah, that would certainly be contingent upon that. Okay, all right. My next legislative request, if you have the old version, I ask to appropriate $31,872, but I've added 2,000 to that because I, until I was driving into work this morning, forgot about graphics. And so now I'll tell you what I'm talking about. It should be 33,000. 33,872. I wrote it wrong on my new one. 33,872 from within the capital improvements fund to purchase one fully equipped police charger, police Dodge Charger, police sedan under state of Ohio contract terms and the requisite graphics package.
Do you want to explain the rationale why we're looking to get a new one, Chief?
Well, well, there's a couple reasons. The, and we have... I'm sorry, do we what?
The money.
It would come from the capital improvement fund. We started the year with 1.8 million in that and then 3%, which had about 160 that's going to where everything...
Yeah, I've got a, I printed out the items. I didn't do that thing just because there's so few on here. In the parks, the only one was playground equipment for Geller, which we got the grant to cover, I think 75% of that, and the rest of it would come from the con fund, so that would come from capital improvements. Bob's talked to us before about the pool, the roof of the bath house needing to be done. We're estimating that at 80. He's got listed here for the street department a dump truck at 100,000, but I'm not sold on that one yet. We're gonna, we're gonna hold on to that. And as far as police is concerned, it's this car and Chief also has carpet and tile for nine grand. John Groff's side, we already appropriated the money for 30th Street paving. That was all he had planned for any projects or anything for 2013 coming out of capital improvements, so that's about it. Fire department wants a fire truck, I think, but we've been down that road. So, anyway, that'd be about it for the year.
Can I answer your question, Mayor?
Yeah, just to make sure I understand as far as why, I mean, because it's not as though, it's not as though we have one that's ready for the scrap heap, but...
Right.
Explain what we're looking at.
Yeah. If you recall, when we, when we bought the Dodge Chargers, I allotted heavily for a two-year rotation. The basic formula was keep the miles down and then trade-in value up and, of course, the maintenance cost down. But last year, we didn't, we didn't buy any cars. And we have an odd number of people assigned to patrol duty. One of the cars has three officers assigned, whereas the remainder has two. And so, you know, that, I should say again, one's only got one, the dog name. But, so that doesn't bid well for the mileage similar. Suffice to say that one, particularly of the 2010, well, they're all 2010s, one of the blue 2010s, my first 2010, is, has a significant amount of miles on it and is still serviceable. But we've, in the last two years, experienced difficulties when one of them goes down for maintenance. And another issue we're seeing that's problematic is driver training. When we do driver training, it's of course high-speed pursuit training and needless to say, repair a car. And, you know, when, every year when we do it, I know that that car that goes through the, we do our training out in National Feral Raceway, I know that car is going to need five rod ends, new tires, front end alignment and various other things. And so, we've, we've had discussion, we being the lieutenant and I, the patrol lieutenant and I, had some discussions with the mayor that it would be very advantageous to keep, rather than trade-in or sell, one of the blue Chargers for other purposes, a backup car, the car used for driver training and at times to drive to London for school, because we're not going to London for school this year, we're done for training. These Dodge Chargers are proving to be kind of a, almost collector's item. I've kept abreast of what other departments are doing with them and they're reselling them to other police departments. And I'm seeing 2008 through 2009 Dodge Chargers, fully equipped, resell for about $15,000. So, and being a car enthusiast, I know that the police package Dodge Charger is a hot commodity. And so, when we do get rid of it beyond what limited use I would anticipate for it, I think we'll certainly, our money's worth out of it. Oh, and secondly, I've asked, I would ask that you waive second reading because the vendor, Coglin, Coglin Cars, who cut the state contract for Dodge Charger, just happens to have one that's white and is holding one. So, a nice little one that's ready to go out for it, needs to go to the upfitter shop for police equipment, but that saves us a couple of months.
That's 2012 model.
That's a 2012. They don't even have any 2013 models yet, but there is nearly no difference between the two models. Both, either one's got zero miles on it.
You change, you have some, put them inside, all computers, etc., can all be changed out?
Uh, to, no, not all of it. You know, when they, when the body style changed in 2011, they were outside looking in, very subtle. But in the corporate Chrysler folks, to all the outfitters, don't worry, everything will fit from a 2008 or, or 2006, whenever the Charger came out as a police model, they all fit. The outfitters found out it doesn't all fit. So, what, I'm trying to think what readily comes to mind. I think consoles are different. And I think the prisoner security bars on the rear windows and possibly...
Those are different?
Subtlety, there's subtle differences. They can use them, the outfitters can use them, but they have to do a little fabricating to get them to work.
Yeah.
They've done it. They, they got caught flat-footed with the 2011 models, so, yeah, there's, there's subtle differences, but they can make everything work.
So, all these month cases are all part of this 33,872? All these changes?
Yes. As a matter of fact, there are outfitters, the one that we use.
So, when, the fleet that we have right now, we've got half blue and half white, will the white ones resell better, do you think, than the blue?
Yeah, I think, you know, the, the, the paint is $500 for the blue. It's only because it's a special order.
Uh-huh.
So, I don't know that it's...
I was wondering, I mean, I don't know a lot of, you know, if it's white, you got a lot of flexibility as to what you can do with it as a department that we're buying it. If it's blue, I don't know.
Well, you know, I, I was, I was pleased when we had to buy white ones and people liked them better because they're $500 cheaper. That all worked out.
First, we're gonna increase our fleet by one, that one for a crash car for lack of a better description.
Hopefully not crash.
Sounds like everything would have crashed.
I don't know. If you're gonna crash one, crash that one.
That's what I'm saying, I call it a crash car because this is a training car that you're gonna just beat the living daylights out of.
Once a year.
Once a year.
But it is, a Mopar, so no worries.
I had to get that for somebody else. Any other reason for wanting to waive the second on that is so we can get this car that's being held for us?
Yes. Yeah, I...
Is that listed on the request?
Yes, it's under the comments section.
Okay.
And last legislative request is to authorize the chief of police to enter into a mutual aid agreement with other Lincoln County law enforcement agencies. But the last one that was signed was in 1992 and I've been here for 10 years. I've been president of the Chiefs Association three times for a year and we've tried to get to the prosecutor's office to update the mutual aid compact every year. And for some reason, it's fallen on deaf ears, but we finally got there and the one, one thing of note is that the Lincoln Memorial Hospital is on this one. Before, it had to be a political subdivision, so they're a private police department and there's also the addition of New Albany, New Albany now has a piece of Lincoln County, so I don't know. I, I have had the...
The mall?
The mall? No, they're, they're private security. The law director has already reviewed this agreement and in 1992, we passed a resolution and I got an email from the law director this afternoon. He said the best practice would be to have council adopt a new ordinance, not resolution, approving new mutual aid agreement and authorizing, directing you, being me, to sign it on the city's patent. And he said he discussed it with Butch, you know, Butch Griggs. One thing we're adding to this mutual aid is, that this mutual aid mandates is that each agency provide a list of all officers authorized to invoke mutual aid and some of the larger departments don't have that much trouble, they just, all are sergeants and above, but of course we have, we make good use of senior officers, so probably just got everybody's name on the offer. Last but not least, we made a conditional officer, offer to a new records clerk that just happened to be related to somebody here. And do you want me to let anybody know she's your sister?
Yeah, okay.
It's Tim's sister.
He didn't care, but she does not have.
Yeah, Karen was, accepted the offer and we're nearly finished with her background and she'll hopefully start very soon. And that's all I have.
Questions?
Five fifty-five. Obviously, I'm not Chief Ligon.
I had to sit close to the table.
I know Chief Ligon's just looking forward to seeing the...
Did everybody get a copy of his agenda? He just left this for me.
I don't have one.
I got a couple extra here.
I can make copies if you need.
I'll fill it up there, so... Stats for January, our actual fire runs. Fire runs were down just a little bit for the month of January, had ended up with 30 fire runs compared to 42 last year. Our EMS runs have been up significantly for the month. We've got 173 in the month of January, up from 144, you know, and our total transports were slightly up, we had 88 transports this year as compared to last year. Any questions? They were the run, run stats.
Think it had anything to do with the snow? So, we have any...
No, we've actually haven't, we haven't had that many calls as far as snow. Most of them, just, just been our EMS calls.
Probably like slipping on the ice or something like that.
Yeah, we didn't have too many calls, it's kind of surprising. No legislative request in our expense report. January wages, almost 66,000. Our OT was up from last year, 22,000, a little over 22,000 as compared to 15,000 last year. twenty-two thousand, a little over twenty-two thousand as compared to fifteen thousand last year.
Warren, is that, uh, I mean, do people take vacation time in January this year where they didn't really do it last year?
Yeah, there were a couple of people that took vacation time this year.
Sometimes I think we had, I mean, Baughman was in the rotation. Everybody's back.
Just came up on the rotation.
Is, is Cause back?
Yes, Cause is back.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, everybody's back up. We're back up the full staff at this point and Bob does now, um, approved to work over time. I'm not having for him anymore.
So is it just scheduled vacation time and stuff?
Yeah, we didn't have anybody off or anything, so just scheduled vacation. A couple of people took vacation this month. Kind of unusual. We don't normally have that.
Okay.
Um, we had to have one of our furnaces repaired, um, we were at sea last Saturday. Okay, that, the heat wasn't working. One of the furnaces had to be repaired off duty. That was, you know, the cost is about a hundred and five dollars to get that fixed at the EMT and the pool, yeah.
Was that one or two?
Uh, that was at station one.
Okay.
One of the three furnaces. Um, one of the, uh, shutter actuators, which when you start up the trucks inside, the vents open up to allow the fumes and stuff out. One of the actuators needed to be repaired. That was a little over eleven hundred dollars to get that fixed. All those chiefs is on vacation till, I believe, the twentieth, will be back on Wednesday, the twentieth. Actually, Lieutenant Swick and myself are gonna be going to a leadership conference at the Cherry Valley Lodge in April. And then also a clock, then our newest firefighter is gonna be taking the training, uh, decision-making for firefighters.
What does that involve? I mean, how do they, how do they train that, like?
Uh, they actually have, um, they do have a simulator over at the fire academy and they also do roundtable discussions and that. It just kind of teaches you some of the things that you need to be looking for when you pull up to a scene. Uh, you see, you know, the different smoke, the different colors of smoke. Uh, there's a lot of things you can tell just by looking, you know, where the fire's coming from and that kind of thing and give you ideas of things you should be thinking about.
Is this a routine class that we send everybody through?
Um...
Or is this something that he wanted to do?
This is something that he wanted to, we've had other people go to it before. It's not something that we routinely send everybody through, but it's just one of the things that he wanted to do.
Okay.
Um, as far as new business, we've been in the process of upgrading our, uh, light pack twelve monitors to have Bluetooth. Um, that will make it compatible with our new software, EMS software and allow us to, uh, put all of our monitor strips directly into, um, the EMS software and into our report and do away with a lot of paperwork. So we're automatically being to it. We also just terminated a request for two new computers to replace the chief's computer and also one, uh, our records re, re, computer app.
Those are the PCs, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we, uh, I, I think we discussed this before, uh, oh, it's been maybe six months ago or so now. Um, myself and Keith and who else was there? General was there, Little Richards may have been there. Uh, we'd had a meeting, um, with Rich Day and his group. We have a number of computers in the city that over the next two or three years or so, we're gonna have to cycle new ones in. Um, in part just because the operating system on them isn't gonna be supported anymore by Microsoft, so... And again, those are just, those are PCs, you know, desk, desk computers.
We are gonna need to purchase also one more of our, uh, new laptops to put in our reserve medic. We purchased two of them last year, uh, to put the new software on. Uh, but we've come to find out we're, we're using our reserve medic, our backup medic, a lot more than we have.
Are we using it or is Granville using it?
No, we are actually using it.
Okay.
Granville has used it in the past, um, but we've actually been taking it out on third EMS calls, uh, quite a bit here lately, so... Uh, and we don't, we just didn't purchase a computer for it.
Just where, if, if there's somebody in the station and then they take a volunteer with them or something on everyone like that?
Yeah, either they take a volunteer with them, you know, if the chief is there sometimes, the captain, then the chief will take it out when the other two guys are already gone or something, so... Yeah, but it has been one.
Sometimes we're running three.
Three EMS calls at a time, yeah.
Ah, okay. Now, when that happens, does the nine-one-one center know then that as far as fire engine coverage, we're, we're out?
Yeah, yeah, it, uh, they automatically update and what generally happens is if medic nine goes out, then it shows engine two, which is the engine over at the other station is out of service. Uh, once, um, our medic eight goes out at this station, then it still shows our rescue in service until we get another call, but they automatically dispatch mutual aid because they don't know that we have another person to take that medic call and then I'll usually cancel the mutual aid company or whatever and the chief or the volunteer or I'll take it or one of the other captains and then that'll automatically put the rescue out of service at that point also.
Okay, alright.
The, uh, the decision-making.
Yeah, we talked about that. I asked if, I asked if, uh, this was something that everybody came through with or, or if this was something that Andy had requested. It was something that Andy requested, but, uh, of course that we've sent other personnel to, uh, in the past.
Unfortunately.
Okay.
Anything else?
Did we cover the EMS software issues? You had talked about that?
No, we actually pretty much got those worked out. There were some issues early on trying to get the...
This is the new, the one that we transitioned to?
Yes, the new, what we try, it's not actually the software issue. It's the state of Ohio in two thousand and thirteen adopted new agency reporting information. Uh, and the state of Ohio, state of Pennsylvania, state of Texas are the only four states that have their own guidelines. The other states all go by Nemesis, uh, the national, and so, uh, it's been a struggle because there's a forty-six.
Their software is built for everybody else?
Their software is built for, yeah, for the majority, I guess.
Yeah.
Uh, and the state of Ohio has, we call it the Bible. It's forty-six pages long, front and back of, um, closed calls. Basically, if you do this, you have to do this. If you do this, you have to do that. It's forty-six pages long, front and back. So, it's been kind of a challenge because it doesn't make sense in a lot of ways, you know? All the runs that we go out on, regardless of whether it's a medical call or whatever, we still have to report. The state of Ohio wants you to know, wants to know whether the person was involved in a car accident. It doesn't matter. If you go on a bloody nose, they still make you answer the questions, uh, if it's a car wreck and if they're wearing their seatbelt and if they're, you know... And so that presents kind of a challenge to the guys that, literally, they've been spending an hour and a half, two and a half, two hours and it has nothing to do with the new software. This is just the state guideline.
Yeah.
And so we actually had, um, gentlemen in today for about two hours trying to work this out so we can get around some of those issues. The only other option, and the chief and I talked about it, is not doing state reporting. But that also, which I found out today, ninety percent of the company or fire departments in Ohio do not report, do not do state reporting. But that eliminates you from getting grant money, um, for fire and EMS if you don't, but most of the people are not willing to go through the hassle of reporting to the state, so that terminates you from grant money.
Jeez.
But ninety percent at this point refuse to do it.
Wow. I mean, that's a pretty...
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, especially given the consequences.
Right.
What sort of green money is available in these states?
Well, over the course of the last two years, well, the last five years, we've gotten twenty-five hundred dollars each, each year. So, twenty-five hundred dollars, is it worth it or not, you know, like you should have to kind of decide. You know, some departments get a little bit more, but we in general got somewhere in the range of twenty-five hundred dollars each year. Cause I knew those grants, so, um, but I was, yeah, we were just speaking about it today. Everybody's pretty much refusing to report to the state. It's just because it's such a hassle.
Wow. What's the cost of the software? Is it more than twenty-five hundred dollars?
Yeah, but if you remember, Eileen was picking up the tab on a lot of that.
Oh, Medville, yeah, alright, yeah.
Yeah. Any questions?
Thanks, Captain Court.
You're definitely, I guess we'd still be here for another half hour.
Might be able to head out to Valley. The eighth graders have a semifinal game against Academy.